I got about thirty seconds on my computer. Calling a meeting to order, first up is the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, moving on, roll call please.
Brooks.
Here.
Fish.
Here.
Jones.
McInerney.
Wells.
Mayor Beasley.
Here. Okay, we have a full quorum, so we will move on to approval of tonight's agenda. I have a motion from Jones, second by Fish, for approval of today's agenda, questions or discussion? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, item four, we have the minutes of the June seventeenth briefing and the July third regular council meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve, Mayor.
Sir.
I have a motion from Hausmann, second by Brooks, to approve the minutes of those two meetings, questions or discussion? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, moving on to item five, approval of claims for July seventeenth. A motion from Jones, second by Wells, to approve the minute, or, excuse me, the claims for July seventeenth. Any questions or discussion? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Come to our visitors and timed items, none are listed, but if there is somebody that wishes to address the council, they have five minutes. I believe no one is in that, so we will move on to number seven. We have the second reading of ordinance five-five-three, noxious weeds. I have a motion from McInerney, second by Wells, to approve the second reading of ordinance five-five-three, dealing with noxious weeds, questions or discussion? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, item eight, we have two people that want to work at the golf course.
I'll make a motion to approve the two hires.
Sir.
A motion from Hausmann, second by Brooks, to approve the hiring of two people to work in the lounge, questions or discussion? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item nine, we have the police report in front of us. We also have the monthly building inspection code enforcement report. And now, as the chief is making his way up to the microphone, we have a-
Yeah, I was gonna say, that was a slow walk.
Resignation.
We did receive a resignation notice from our newest officer, Vitale, and this came after a discussion with him, it was a mutual agreement, and kinda speaks for itself.
Make a motion to accept the resignation of Officer Vitale.
Sir.
A motion from Jones, second by Brooks, to accept the resignation of Police Officer Vitale, questions or discussion? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Please thank him for us, for his diligence and coming on and giving her the little Boy Scout track.
Best of luck in his future endeavors.
Now you have to go through the whole interview process again, or can you narrow it from the group that you've interviewed before?
Uh, we've exhausted the previous list, and so we will be probably tomorrow putting that out. Advertising is starting to take, I've already received some applications, so there is, there is an interest.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you. Anything else, Chief?
Uh, we had the tire spike surplus. And donation to, of those to the Fall River County Sheriff's Office.
Now, do we have to declare them surplus if we are gonna donate them?
I think you do.
Okay, so.
The thing that's different-
It's coming this way?
Is over the five hundred dollars, you're gonna have to bid it if you give it to another government agency, but that's the only difference.
We have a value put at three fifty?
I'll make that motion to declare those tire spikes surplus, and as that, part of that motion, that we donate those to the Fall River County Sheriff's Office.
That alright with you two, Mr. Wells, on the second? Alright, so I have a motion from Jones, second by Wells, to make those tire spikes surplus, and it's under the five hundred dollar bid, it's less than that, so, and then they will be donated to Fall River County Sheriff's Office, any questions on that? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, very good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Jay, I see you sitting in the, in the audience, would you like to come up and talk to us for a minute or two, it's been a long time since we saw ya. Um, if you push the purple button, there you go, perfect.
If you could scowl at me a little bit, so I feel like I'm at home here at a council meeting. So, um, anyway, I just wanted, I haven't been here for a while, I just kinda wanted to give you guys an update of what we've been up to the last several years, um, new council members, um, are you, are you related to the Wells in town here, Dave Wells, and, no, okay. But, um, I'm Jay Major for you guys, uh, I own MedStar Ambulances, and, uh, the last several years, what we've kinda been up to, we have eight critical care ambulances right now, um, we have seven of them here in Brandon, we have one stored in Sioux Falls, we have a building in Sioux Falls now, uh, we have five transit vehicles, so transit slash wheelchair vans, that we opened that business up back in February with one vehicle, and we're up to five already. In those vans, as well as the ambulances, what we've done, um, and by the way, we're very proud to be in the city of Brandon, you guys have been very gracious and very helpful, except for the water guy over there who about shut me off because I forgot to pay a water bill, but. No, but I'm so happy to be here in Brandon, um, we, uh, so we opened up a transit service, and what that service is, is we, uh, we take late-on patients, setup patients, in those vehicles, we have refrigerators, um, for, uh, things for the people to, to drink while we're on these, uh, transports. We also have TV sets in there, we, we, they can watch DVDs, they can watch TV, we have radios, and so what we've tried, and that's in all of our ambulances too, so what we've tried to do is take the industry and stepped up a little bit, um, you've noticed that on every vehicle we have now, um, or most of them, there's a star on the side of the vehicle, and on that star, we're putting pictures of something of significance, whether it be national or local, and, um, so anything from Outrush More to picture of the Brandon Police, which I'm gonna apply for that job when I didn't know that was available, um. No. I felt that in the back of my head there, um, so anyway, I just, our response times in this city are averaging four-plus minutes, um, we, at any given time, we've had up to five ambulances on the road for emergencies, with the longest response time of twelve minutes, and that's five ambulances in a row, not. And so what we've done is we've taken your ordinance, which allows, says we have to have one ambulance available, that's all we have to have, and then we can call for mutual aid. Since we've opened up in two thousand and seven, we've had to call for mutual aid once in this city, and that was because we had six ambulances on the road, and we didn't have a seventh, and there was an accident in Brandon, and unlike our friends in Sioux Falls, we don't wait, we don't wait. If we have nothing available, I promise you, we will call the nearest available ambulance to come in this town and take it for whatever reason it is. We just haven't had to do that because we go above and beyond with our service, and we do that because, frankly, this city gave us the opportunity to have an ambulance service. And for those of you that aren't from here back, uh, we fought very hard to, to become a nine-one-one provider in this, in this community, and, um, we had a lot of community support. And we proved ourselves, I believe, in this community, that we're a value to this community, and the community is a value to us. Uh, we also have a race rescue team that travels the country, and as of today, we're following the World of Outlaws, the All-Stars, Tony Stewart, um, we're starting to follow USAC. And so those are the top, uh, top racing deals in the industry, and so that's kind of an update of what MedStar's been up to, um, and we appreciate, again, um, all the city has done for us, except for Brian shut my water off again, I was out of town for that one, but, um, you know, the one thing about this town, and I'll say this out of all sincerity, it doesn't make any difference who you are, you treat us all the same, so whether, whether you're MedStar, or whether you're the guy walking down the street that's drunk, we all get treated the same in this, in this town, and, and that's a value that is not in every town, uh, so you guys keep up that good work, and, um, I appreciate all you do for this town. Any questions?
Thank you.
Yes, thank you so much.
Thank you, Jay, thank you for everything that you've done for us, it's, uh, it does my heart good to see how much you've grown and, and what you've done, so, thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you for coming to our council and talking to us, yeah, we haven't seen you for a while, at least since I've been on council, I think, so, appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Have you? Have you seen things in our community change over the last ten years, as we've grown, have you seen the number of calls, the types of calls change, have you had to adapt and change? I'm just kinda wondering, do we get any type of, or do you produce, or does the city get any type of service type statistics, tracking, you know, with the number of calls and the average response time, and all those things are kinda trending over time, and is there anything to keep an eye on, or?
You know, that's a great question, and, uh, the city did do that for the first four years that we were in business, the city hired a professional to oversee things, and it wasn't anybody that you or I knew, some of you hired to come in and do it, and for those four years, um, the rating was exceptional, and this was a national guy, and in fact, he says that we were probably one of the top response times in the country, along with the care, and after that four years of paying that money out, um, the city at that point figured that it wasn't worth spending the money anymore for that, because, again, we go above and beyond, but if you ever wanna do that, I'm all behind it. It's just, um, you know, we're all looking at the dollars and cents these days, from the county to the city, and wherever we can save a dollar, but yet keep the quality where it needs to be, but any quality assurance that, that, uh, the city ever wanted to do here, I'm all for it, as long as you don't hire REMSA.
Well, I'm certainly happy to have you here, and with a call time of a little over four minutes, that just makes, I think, gives us all a great feeling of comfort, particularly as I advance, advance in age, so, you know, so thank you for being here.
And she looked at me when she said it.
And Jay, I can, I can appreciate the call time too, I actually got my start in medicine, working on an ambulance for, uh, close to three years down in Florida, so, four minutes is, is appreciated. Time does make a difference, by the way, no matter what you hear with our sister city, time is valuable, you know, and, and I don't need to explain that to anybody other than people that are in the political side of this thing, but any time that you can save a minute is a minute well-earned, and, um, anyway, we're gonna continue to do the best we can in this city, if you have any questions, always feel free to come and talk to us, we're always, we always welcome you here, and, um, same with our people back here, I appreciate all the support that the city has given us, and thank you very much.
Yes.
I just wanna take a minute to go on record and say, I have a very close friend by the name of Dr. Jeff Luther, um, him and I, Jeff oversaw REMSA for years, and, uh, him and I talk frequently, and Jeff very clearly stated to me that over the years, um, working with Jay and his people, he said, "If I were to have to be in an ambulance today, there's no other ambulance that I'd rather be in than a MedStar ambulance," and coming from Dr. Jeff Luther, that, uh, that speaks volumes for you, Jay, so, thank you.
Jay, I'm one of those guys that, um, two of your guys in one ambulance, two cop cars, and three nurses from across the street, when my wife called nine-one-one for the first time I went down, uh, believe me, I appreciate what you do, I'm still here.
That's not what your wife was saying. Say, one more thing I gotta mention, because I, also often, and even the racing circuit, we were in Wagner, and they interviewed me for a while, you always have to remember, it's not the guy standing up doing all the talking all the time, it's, it's our team, uh, the city of Brandon couldn't operate without everybody that's under you, Mr. Mayor, and doing a great job, so our team at MedStar, whether it be the race rescue side or the ambulance side, it is absolutely a team effort, if I was doing it myself, you wouldn't, I couldn't be standing here talking to you the way I am, so, it, um, you know, the whole team cares, and so when you see the team out there in the streets, just a, a thank you or a wave to them, they appreciate that more than if you threw a dollar bill at them, so, again, thank you.
You bet, thank you, Jay. You bet. Nothing further, alright. Item ten, park and rec, we have our maintenance report, we just had a meeting, park meeting.
Yes, uh, so we just had a meeting, a couple of updates, the, um, park up in Stone Ridge, we're going to be grading that and getting the park equipment in this area, that's our plan, so that'll be up and running, um, we are working with the architect on the concession stand at Aspen, and so we expect cost estimates by the end of the month, bid opening on September twelfth, and it'll come to the council on September seventeenth, so we are progressing along with that. And our final item is we're working on the budget for twenty eighteen, we are gonna have to make some updates to the pool, we have some equipment that's twenty, twenty-five years old, um, so that's gonna be coming, and then we'll be working on our capital projects and be bringing that to you in the budget, okay, that's all I have, Mayor.
Alright, thank you. Moving on, item eleven, we have a twenty eighteen budget coming up that we're gonna have to start talking about.
We are, uh, department heads have turned in their budget requests, um, I'm just giving you guys a heads up, if you have a project or a program that you would like us to look at, put some numbers to for the two thousand and eighteen budget, you need to get your ideas to us fairly quickly.
Alright, and then item B, fireworks ordinance.
Just a quick update on the revision to the fireworks ordinance that went into effect in June, uh, included in the packet for you, four emails that, that I received regarding the, the change, all expressing some concern with the, the current ordinance, this isn't any larger number than we've seen before, but just, I told the folks that I'd get these to you.
And thanks for doing, how many, so, four emails in total?
That's all I received.
How many phone calls?
I didn't, I didn't receive any phone calls, well, one from, from Dana Clark, but that's summarized in the email from her.
And how many emergency response calls, any?
Two, it was injury.
Yeah, two or one? Okay.
So that's less than, what, last year was like ten or twelve, right? Yeah.
Or, I think we're talking about injuries. Both really.
Well, both really, 'cause last year we had like ten, didn't we, and this year now we have four?
Emails?
Emails, calls.
We did, we, we did receive a few complaints about fireworks, probably just a handful, um, we explained to them that the ordinance had changed, and that, uh, that these people were, were now in compliance, I thought you were asking about injuries, we did have one, one injury, uh, that was reported, possibly a second one, but I, we didn't have a report on that, um, but, uh, as far as phone calls to our office, maybe one or two, I think most of them went to, to Brian.
And there was one citation issued, correct?
One citation issued about eleven-thirty, eleven-thirty-five.
How do you feel it went compared to previous years, was there a change, I mean?
You know, when you've got that many fireworks going off, last year, I, I, I don't know if there was a significant increase in the number of fireworks going off than in previous years. They did have the ordinance, uh, still in place over in Sioux Falls, and as you looked over at the, the cityscape over there, you saw a lot of, uh, of fireworks going up in the air also, even with their, with the ordinance.
Well, I guess I wanna go on record and applaud this council for actually helping put together an ordinance that we could put on the book that I feel is enforceable, which is, uh, which is more than we had before, so, thank you.
Alright, anything else for the chief on the fireworks? Alright, um, we did discuss something about those lantern things that was, was talked about in your letter from, from Dana Clark. They, they're like a hot air balloon, but they're on fire?
Correct, they're the Chinese lantern type where they light them off, and then as the air heats up in the paper balloon, they float away. Chief and I did discuss maybe banning those, 'cause once you let them go, they are going to land somewhere, um, and the flame may or may not still be lit. So, and I did see one, not this year, but the previous year, land on a roof, and sit for a while until the air heated up again and off it went, but it was on the roof for a couple of minutes.
I saw one land in a tree this year, so.
That might be something that we want to take a look at before the next fourth.
In my opinion, if, if drones are not allowed in the air, I don't think lanterns should be either, 'cause they, they, believe it or not, they can do just as much harm to a, to a jet engine, so. From, even from that perspective, I think they're dangerous, from the fire perspective, I think they're, I think it's a crazy idea.
Alright, anything else, administration? P and Z Thursday. Alright.
We've got, we've got seven apps for the Open Planning and Zoning Commission post, so Larry and I will go.
Yeah.
Go through those.
Yeah, we'll go sit down and talk to a few people and.
Are the, uh, council packets now out on the website, or did I just now catching up, and they've been there for a while, for all of the community to access?
Yeah, they've been out there for a while.
Okay. Logging in, I guess then.
Alright, moving on, item twelve, we have our maintenance work report from the street department. And then we have a pole-type paving machine that Raleigh wants to declare a surplus, and put it on an auction site called Purple Wave, and it is over, his estimated value is over five hundred, so, there you go, gentlemen and lady.
Yeah, I'm not sure of the year, Christina and I dug and dug trying to find that, but, um, we kinda got it on a trade deal for our air compressor, so, or, we, we traded it for an air compressor in this, and we gave them a crack setting machine, so, um, I'm guessing roughly it's about nineteen eighty-six, so, it's seen its better days, um, one gentleman that I talked to, that we bought our paver from, said that he could, he would estimate the value around a thousand dollars, but couldn't guarantee that, so, I figured five hundred, and putting it on the website, that'll help sell it, so, don't have to put a reserve on it or anything, so.
So you want five hundred dollars on this?
That'd be good.
Five oh one? Five hundred one.
To approve this as surplus.
I have a motion from Hausmann, second from Wells, to declare it surplus, questions or discussion? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Anything else?
Mayor, I'd like to add one thing real quick, I had mentioned this at the Thursday night meeting, the open house for the Slurry Seal Project, which is our annual street maintenance project, will be July twenty-fifth, from six to approximately seven PM, at the Celebration United Methodist Church, and it's in that area of town where Celebration Church is, from Redwood to Split Rock, Sioux Boulevard, Holly Boulevard, that neighborhood there to the north of Holly is where our project is this year, so, uh, we have it, we'll have it in the newspaper, and also put it on Facebook, it'll be in the next Wednesday's newspaper. And we've gotten the invites out to all those property owners today, so they'll be receiving those more than likely tomorrow.
How's the construction on Redwood going in terms of attaining or meeting the deadlines?
Uh, we're currently talking to the contractor right now, he's planning on paving Thursday and Friday, if the weather holds out, we shouldn't have any issues with getting Redwood Boulevard opened up, so we, more than likely, will have surfacing done by the completion date.
How are things going over in Sylvan?
Good, that I'm aware of, I think, yep. We're into- We're into phase two right now, which is the northeast section, northwest area, Sylvan Circle out to Needles Drive and Split Rock Boulevard, and that area is phase two. They got started in that area with removals, and they're working on the storm sewer right now in phase one, when they're done with that, then we'll start with the grading and the subgrade work with, in phase one, and then get that surfaced, I think they're close to on schedule, I know they were a couple weeks behind about a month ago, but I think they're doing pretty good catching up.
They're catching up a little bit on that, um, but, uh, just to follow up with you on that, we got those emails, and, uh, we're following up with the contractor on that, so he's aware of it too, so, uh, that's really, will be up to, I mean, the site, it becomes a general contractor's site, so, we, we've turned it over to them. So if that's what you're referring to.
Yeah, that's what I was referring to, and just how overall the project was going.
It's actually going really well, uh, it was delayed, like Paul was said at first, but, uh, really, the project's going, uh, really well, um, as good as we can expect a neighborhood project to go, please keep in mind, it's very interruptive to the residents, and, uh, you know, they've been patient, uh, you know, as much as they can be, so.
I just wanna encourage you, when property owners still have to get to their homes in those areas, it's not very well graded, and from what I understand, that area, that where there were some issues, a two-foot to three-foot difference in grade here and there on a project like that, where we completely remove the road, and we excavate, overexcavate the, the street area two feet, just to get down to where we can start working in the subgrade, and, and so that's to be expected in those areas, and it's dark, we've removed the street lights right away in order to get the, basically the utilities installed, so, if you're out there at night, it's very difficult to see, we would encourage property owners to always have some sort of a headlamp or a flashlight when they're walking, uh, just to avoid those areas where there, I mean, six inches is enough to easily trip and fall down, if that's the case, we wanna make sure that those property owners and anybody that's visiting is very well prepped on what to expect in a project like that, and that's not unusual in any of our construction areas. We try to accommodate and limit those inconveniences as much as we possibly can, and, and try to put things in the plans for those provisions if necessary, so if there is issues with people, property owners that have, um, mobility issues, we certainly want to try to accommodate that as much as possible, and, and encourage those property owners to contact us if necessary.
I guess, and it's my own fault, I didn't realize it was gonna be as, I didn't realize they had to park all the way to the back and come through the neighbor's backyard to get to, I mean, I just, I didn't realize it, 'cause I never have, I don't- to get to, I mean, I just, I didn't realize it because I never have, I don't, I didn't drive over there when they started it. So...
We make very clear during the public meetings that we host and get that information out to property owners so that we encourage them to come to the meetings and, and we explain those parking situations. We've been dealing with Sylvan Circle, that area now for seven plus years. And, and so neighbors help neighbors to allow them to park in certain areas and, and the community helps too. The churches, we allow them to park in Pioneer Park. And, and so that's discussed during this open houses. That's why it's important to try to take that initiative, go to those meetings so that we can get that information out as much as possible.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No, I'm done.
Anything else? All right. Okay. Item thirteen A, we have resolution ten seventeen, intent to reimburse for the Holly and Sioux sanitary sewer project in 2018.
This is for the construction project, for the project redoing Holly from Casey's west to the bridge and then running the sanitary sewer southwest along the railroad tracks to Dogwood and then over to Main and then installing a new street sewer water from Dogwood to Aspen and then extending a new force main and a new lift, or larger lift station at the pool. Estimated cost for that project is five and a half million. Uh, this resolution will allow us to reimburse any costs that we incur until we finalize financing.
A motion from Wells, second by Brooks, to approve resolution ten seventeen for reimbursement for Holly and Sioux sanitary sewer project in 2018. Questions or discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item B, wastewater ponds reclamation project.
We've, uh, I don't know what this is up there. Is that, that isn't to do with this project? We wanted, uh, you know, as, at the briefing meeting, we discussed, uh, where we're at with the bio solids. The project is actually, um, on schedule, first of all. I'd like to start with that. Uh, the contractor's been cleaning out cells one, two, one and two primarily. They have not worked into, uh, cell number three at all at this point. Uh, we're, uh, we are, uh, they've started the, the grading also. So, they've actually started moving the hill from the, from up on top down to the bottom. So, basically we're, we're working with the unclassified excavation now as well and trying to push those bio solids to one end. Uh, we are running over on quantities. We're gonna, we're gonna exceed our planned quantity. And so tomorrow, uh, we're meeting with the contractor to come up with alternative plans to, to help mitigate that. Uh, and those plans are going to be a couple of different things that we're going to talk about. One will be, uh, just placing material, the bio solids on site, uh, and blending it in with our topsoil. So, an increase in, uh, volume that way, which would, uh, increase the contractor's unclassified excavation quantity, but it would reduce the amount of bio solids that we'd have to haul out. Uh, the other thing that we've talked about at the briefing meeting briefly was leaving the bio solids in place in cell one, completing all the work in cell two so that we could continue on with, uh, the, uh, so that the lift station and the equalization basin is complete. That, that won't change. That wouldn't change. All we would, the, the only thing we were thinking about was leaving the bio solids, uh, that are still remaining in, uh, cell number one to just dry out longer and then come back later and do an excavation project to haul that away. I don't think that's going to be our best alternative because I think it'll cost more later than it will today. And so we'll be looking at our alternatives tomorrow. We're going to meet with contractor and actually, uh, talk about several alternatives. There are some, uh, some items that we're not using on the project that we're obviously going to be crediting. Uh, so there's some room that we have for credits, but, uh, we are looking at a, an increase in what we had estimated by quite a bit. And what that volume is, we don't know yet. Uh, it's just very difficult to establish or estimate that volume, uh, because of, uh, the bio solids. Even what we're seeing right now, it's just very difficult to estimate what that bio solids volume is when we haul it out. So... Can I answer any other questions for you guys?
Thank you, Joe.
Mm-hmm. So, after tomorrow's meeting, I think we're going to have some, so a clearer direction, a, a more clear direction and we'll be able to give you some idea of where we're at.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item C, resolution eleven seventeen banning watering of the lawns.
Raleigh, did, did you hand out that?
Yes.
Yeah, it's right here.
We have this right here.
Yep. And that shows our water consumption, um, starting from June first through yesterday. Uh, today...
Where is he?
He's over there.
Oh.
He's right there.
Well, do you know what the water usage was today, Raleigh? Today?
I don't recall what it was up to. The, the one point...
The one point six zero eight. That's what we pumped from the plant itself. You also have to add in the, uh, number three well, which was two hundred and sixty-four thousand five hundred gallons. Um, we were, I'm not sure what we had actually because we checked it early enough in the morning. So, we were probably at a lower amount yet. But, uh, when they checked the plant this morning, the tower was around eight to nine feet and the reservoir was down to two point eight.
And it's about ten thousand gallons per foot in each?
Roughly. Uh, tower should be at about twenty-five feet and the reservoir should be at about fourteen feet.
So, when I look at the plant that flew in for July eleven through seventeen, do I need to add back in the well three totals? Is that what?
Correct. Yeah. The, the plant effluent number you see is just from the plant itself. You have to add that total on the bottom for the number three well onto that. So, going by that, we've exceeded our three days straight and then some.
So, Raleigh, if we had a major fire at this point in time, we probably don't have enough capacity. I mean, that's our real concern here, right?
Brian and I, we're talking, the fire that happened on Conifer two to three years ago, we figured that took about a hundred to a hundred and fifty thousand gallons of water. The house that burned on Ashton Trail used roughly a hundred to a hundred and twenty-five thousand gallons. So, as of eight o'clock this morning when we checked it, we wouldn't have had enough to put it out. We had about a hundred and ten thousand in the system. So...
So, this is a serious problem. This isn't something we're just blowing smoke about.
Something you have to keep in mind. Uh, last year, twenty sixteen budget, we had actually put money in there to do a rehab on the number six well. We pushed that off for the new number six well that was supposed to be built this year. And that's still not been done. That rehab has still not been done on well six. And it has failed in the past. So...
How many wells are we pumping?
We have two wells that we use. Number six well is down here at the park and number three, we don't usually use because it's a low producer. It only produces about six hundred to seven hundred gallons a minute. We're using that one now. It's running, uh, on an average, ten hours a day.
What happens to that well they drilled down by the hockey rink down there?
We have it, but that takes a different treatment process and that process has not been set up at the plant yet.
So, you have wells that...
The other side of that...
Down there by the ball fields too?
No, they've all been abandoned. There's one that's being used. It produces a hundred and fifty gallons a minute. The, uh, number seven well, treatment process has not been put in place yet. Even if we had the treatment process in place, that well produces twelve hundred gallons a minute. We're pumping almost two thousand gallons a minute out of our reservoir right now. So, it would not keep up. And we cannot use well six and well seven at the same time without turning both of those wells down. So, they're not, they're, you can only produce two thousand gallons a minute for the plant. That's all it can take in right now. And if we're sending two thousand gallons a minute or better out, you're just keeping up.
Well, my personal opinion is I'd like to add to some teeth of this water restrictions that we got now.
I'm with you.
I mean, there's a lot of people that ain't paying any attention to that.
We'll have to hold off on comments until, um, the end. But there are a lot of questions that we have as well. And we'll probably get to a lot of things that you're actually raising as questions. Hopefully when we, we bring those up, it answers them for some of the audience. One of the things I guess I'd like to just start with is, you know, some of the historical things here, you know. One of the questions I have is what's, what's different about this year? A, we're not in a drought. I know most of the state is, we're not. We're getting close. It's, it's certainly dry. It's not the hottest it's ever been. Um, our growth over the last several years has been, what, half a dozen, dozen houses per year. So, what, what's kind of changed and what's driving this? Why, why is water usage increasing or...
We're averaging about fifty homes a year. Um, what's different this year historically, after the council has imposed water restrictions, we've seen a significant reduction in usage. Usually, you know, that, that trigger is one point six million gallons for three days in a row. Once that's hit, we put out the stuff typically in the newspaper, on the city website. Um, and that watering goes down. That usage usually drops from one six, one eight, down to one point two, one point three. And it stays pretty consistent down below one five. What's happened this year is if you look at the usage, it's crept back up, crept back up. And then it's, you know, starting early in July, it stayed constant. I don't think the weather patterns have necessarily changed all that much because I remember last year, I went on vacation in June and mowed and I didn't mow again until the end of August, first part of September.
Maybe we got a little lawn problem.
And as of...
My lawn is a little crunchy right at the moment, I do admit.
As of today, the last measurable rain Brandon had was June twenty-seventh where we had one inch. And before that, it was another week or two before we even had maybe two tenths of an inch. So, it's been pretty dry.
And Brian kind of touched on, I think, what my main point is, my main concern is that I think if you go and talk to ten people in the community, maybe three or five know that there's actually watering, watering restrictions in place. We got so many good people and conscientious people in the city that I think if they actually knew about it, they would care and they would stop watering. If they, if they knew the extent of the issue. So, in my personal opinion, our biggest, our biggest obstacle is communication. They're just not getting the message out there. They're not hearing it. We need to do a better job of literally putting it in everybody's face that this is going on, that this is a concern and potentially not, you know, maybe not do exactly what this resolution says where it's, you know, the, the most drastic case of turning off water. But could we go from every other day odd even to one day a week, two days a week and kind of structure it that way? But ensure that it's not just us talking about here and it getting put on Facebook and in, in the paper that it literally needs to be posted out on a billboard or, you know, take every means we can to get that notice out there. And I think we will actually see the results from that that we hope to have and that we won't need to kind of go to this drastic measures. It's my opinion.
We have talked with our, our billing folks who does our mass mailing force. If you want to, and we will put out a mailing early this week, either today or tomorrow or Wednesday. We'll get that mailed out with the water restrictions in it to every, every customer.
You just a slug slip or something?
Nope, nope. Not in, not in the utility bill. This is a totally separate mailing.
I, I agree. I think education is the key here. People don't realize, like, like you said, we have a lot of conscientious citizens here and people just don't know. You know, I brought up the idea last Thursday of maybe a, an LED sign that we could use for various reasons throughout the year for the city. Um, obviously that would take some, some time and money, but until then, I mean, what about putting up some, you know, some, some color attractive, just not necessarily a billboard, but some type of a sign, you know, an A-frame, a, a couple of A-frame signs along Holly and, and Split Rock to get the word out. Because I just, people don't know. That's the problem. People don't know. I just, I firmly believe that.
Donnie put up the signs by Casey regarding the, the construction going on further.
Todd.
Put those on.
Todd, you have to come up to that.
But I, um, I, I'm thinking, you know, we do have folks in town that have boards, you know, like Taco John's and Ace Hardware. They'd probably help us out. But John, I don't think we've done anything, I don't think we did anything different last year to publicize it than we have this year.
We've actually done more this year.
So, that's my, my perplexion on, you know, like, how come they're not hearing it this year? I don't know what the answer is.
I think if you look at the usage, it, it does look like it had an impact right away, right? Because if we enacted this around early June, middle of June, it went from one point eight, one point eight, one point nine, all the way down to one point three, one point one, one point two. And it stayed there for a time and it was cooler during, during June and we actually had water. That, that's, that's the biggest driver there. But the other thing is it probably wore off and it just needs to be reinforced. And I literally got texts asking if there were water restrictions going on and they were enacted, you know, a month and a half ago. So, people don't know. And I, I agree completely. I think the best thing is just put some signs at the main thoroughfares into the access into the city, get the message out there, reinforce it, how critical it is, what, what is actually at risk if we don't see a, a deterioration.
Well, you were asking about the, the rain thing to, to your point. What Raleigh said was we had inches of rain up until the twenty-seventh. So, people weren't pushing the water as much. Some people will, but ninety percent, I have a lawn care business. So, I see who's watering, who's not watering, who doesn't care. But to Don's point, like I mentioned, that sign that was over here by Casey's and we had one coming in, if we'd put some of those big construction-type billboard signs that say, you know, watering ban enforced, please be aware, put it there at the exit of Brandon or coming into Brandon from the interstate, from Aspen Boulevard, from the south side on Sioux Boulevard or, or Split Rock. So, people coming in, as you said, on the main thoroughfares are going to see that. That's going to get the point across. So many people I talked to didn't have a clue about this. And when Roger mentioned it to me yesterday, I was the one that put it on the brand and ask and tell. Just beware, this is coming. Not as a, a disgruntled comment, but because the information was never out there. I see it when I come down to City Hall to see that there's a watering every other day ban. But how many people don't? How many older people read Facebook? How many other people are actually, now Jill, here's your, your, your stat. How many people are actually subscribing when you were still with the Challenger? Twenty-three hundred, I think you told me one time?
No, about eleven hundred.
Eleven hundred. Well, that's not many papers getting that information. So, if they don't go to Facebook, which older generations won't, um, and if their grandkids aren't going to tell them. So, we've got to find another way. And like you said, I think those major signs for at least a couple of weeks. It might, you know, bring something around until we have others. You mentioned, uh, Taco John's. I know Tom over at the pharmacy would do the same thing coming into town there. But you also lose people that turn on Sioux or Redwood and, and go around there and wouldn't find that as informational. But yes, I think putting that on marquees around the city is going to have to do something.
Well, I'm certainly a fan of better communication, but I will tell you that I've been part of the city my entire adult life. I've been on this council. I'm in the middle of my third term and communication is always what it comes back to. This is a dangerous situation, people. Um, if we don't enact this tonight, I'm understanding. But I am not willing myself personally to go another two weeks until another council meeting to see if we have a drop in water. Because as, as stewards to this city, our job, number one, is public safety. And I do not want to be sitting next to a family as they're watching loved ones, whatever the case may be, um, their residents burning to the ground because we're not able to provide them water. Roger and I have both spent years on the volunteer fire department. Um, we've worked those fires. I worked the T.O. Haas fire when we had that fire. We dumped three hundred and eighty-five thousand gallons of water on that fire. Where would we have been if we would have not had the water to fight that fire? Now, I understand where the residents are at. I like green grass too. But I also love a safe city. And we need to be able to know that worst-case scenario, and that's what we have to plan for in a situation like this, worst-case scenario, if our firefighters are out and they've called three or two or three other departments for mutual aid to fight a large structure fire, that we can provide them the water that they need to be able to fight, excuse me, fight that fire. So, I'm not saying I, I'm not a fan. Um, we can certainly try a better communication, but we're going to have to see a drastic change in water within a week. Or we will, my opinion is we will have to call a special meeting of this council to push this resolution. Could be, because we don't have a choice.
We don't have the choice. Not with those numbers.
And Blaine, I totally agree because right now we have to think about our residents and if there is a fire. I mean, the communication, we have to work on that, but right now it's, we're in dire straits and we have to worry about where we'd get the water if there was a fire. So, at this time, I'm all in favor of a mandatory watering restriction. And you know what? If my neighbors are watering, I'm going to go tell them, don't water. You know, I mean, we all have to do our part to let them know. And I know a lot of people don't, uh, read Facebook or don't read the paper, whatever. And a lot of people I've talked to didn't know there was a restriction. And, but now I think we have to do the LED lights or something to put that outside the city as they're coming in and maybe within the city as well. But I, I don't want to wait another two weeks because God forbid any of our houses ever go up in flames.
Is, is there a way that we could do this without having to shut off their water? I, I just think about what if we have people...
The other option is a misdemeanor charge. Um, including the ordinance now, once the city council approves a ban, which you did back in June, or, uh, restrictions, violators, we have two choices. A, we can shut off their water or B, we can charge them. A, we can shut off their water, or B, we can charge them with a misdemeanor. Now, the misdemeanor takes a while to work its way through the court system, shutting off water. And what I, what I was proposing, we wouldn't shut it off the first time. We would post their property with a very conspicuous, that they would not miss as they come in, that says, notice, you're in violation of the water restrictions. You know, if you have questions, call City Hall. Post that, and then if it happens again-
They're on vacation for a week or 10 days. They've got their sprinklers set to automatic, they don't know about it. They come home, it's the weekend, and their water's shut off. I just think that that is pretty drastic.
But how are we supposed to know who's on vacation?
Well, we don't, that's why I want to do them, I would rather-
If, if we do the misdemeanor, I don't, I don't think that we're going to see an immediate reduction in water usage. Because it's a long-term process.
And I think a lot of the folks, a lot of the reason the folks-
Hang on, hang on, sit down, sit down.
I think a lot, a lot of the reason that the folks are here tonight is, is they come back to us and they say, okay, we've got an ordinance on board, what are you going to do to enforce it? This is a difficult one, and it brings us to the position that we are tonight. And for those of you that are short-tempered about what we're talking about, I apologize. But then you should be policing the people. We don't have somebody that we can put in a vehicle to drive around to see if sprinklers are running. If you see them, call. Or if you see them, go and visit with them. We deal with them the way we can. As a matter of fact, the, the facts are right here tonight. When we put it in place, it dropped. It's creeping up because it's getting dry. The people in Brandon love to have their lawns green. It's that simple. So until they're faced with the true facts that if your house starts on fire today, we're not going to be able to put it out, only then are they going to understand, I'd rather have a brown lawn than a burnt down house. Or a loss of life. And frankly, that's what it boils down to. That's our job, like it or not, folks, those are the facts. I'm sorry.
You make approach now.
Thank you, sir. I guess the only thing I want to state-
You have to come up to the mic. Bob, tell us your name and address, sir.
Okay, Bob Worman, and I live a few doors down from Roger Brooks, 204 Country Club Avenue.
Thank you.
And Mr. Beasley, the only thing I wanted to state was, in previous years, we've always had clear communication. And this year, I did not see a thing. And I take the Argus leader, I don't take the Brandon Challenger. And I guess, you know, I didn't know there's ever other, every other day watering or anything like this at all. And the only thing I was going to state when you, you know, pointed your finger at me was that, communication, that's as simple as it is. You were talking about signs and all these types of things. You know, we need to be talked to about this and so we know what's going on. That's all I was going to say.
All right, well, thank you very much.
I wasn't chewing your butt or anything.
Just as a form of communication to you, Bob-
Yeah, Bob, would you come back up for me, please?
Just as a form of communication to you, you know, I apologize if we feel like we get short up here, but we have to run an organized meeting. And having someone stand up in the audience and start blurting out, I mean, we have to stop that. We're not trying to be unfriendly at all. We just need to keep things organized and orderly because this is a hot topic. Every one of us up here have been contacted about this. And this isn't something that we want to do, but frankly, we don't have a choice.
Well, I felt you were getting totally hit, this communication is very important. And you were right on the line, and man, this is it, and it's simple.
And I actually have a question pertaining to that for you specifically.
Okay.
Any which way, what would be the best way to communicate with somebody like yourselves?
Well, myself, uh-
Because that's what we've dealt, our biggest question is how do we do it? What is the best mechanism?
Well, I live by Rogers.
Everybody does so many different things.
He told me about it, so that was simple. And, but I think some signs out and about would work. And, you know, maybe I'm on another board and we have to talk to people. Maybe call them out, call up a few, get your neighbors, get some people kind of talking to their neighbors, some of this kind of thing. And, well, the Argus leader, maybe get an article in there and maybe get it on the news.
Well, I will tell you, after today, Roger was interviewed by Kelo and KSFY, and there was a news camera in the back tonight. I'm pretty sure that people will know about it after today.
Which was excellent, I, that's-
But I will tell you also that our form of communication this year was no different than it's been any other year.
It's been more this year.
It's been more. Yes.
But I just didn't happen to see anything this year, I guess.
And my apologies, sir, if I offended you.
Well, you didn't offend me, but-
Yep.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bob.
Thank you.
Say, Brian and/or Raleigh, what, what level of granularity or detail do we have on specific users of water? Do, can we get to that? I mean, say for instance, because what I'm trying to struggle with is, do we have 10 users that are using up 40% of the water? Or do we, is it everybody's just contributing a little bit and everybody needs to make a change then? Or if we go out and talk to these 12 people or businesses or-
It's, it's going to be, it's going to be more than 12. Pulling, pulling a few limited accounts that either had a question when they called or we just were curious about. What we're finding is that every one of them is using twice as much water as they should. You know, the rule of thumb is one inch of water per week to keep your grass healthy through the season. Looking, and I, I pulled up their, their parcels on, on the county website, measured off their green space. And, you know, they, they should be using somewhere between 15,000 and 20,000 gallons of water for the month. They were consistently using over 50. So that's just a matter of the, the lawn sprinkler was set, it's set on time, it's not based on gallonage. You know, I know Roger has gone out and measured his sprinklers so that he knows when he's hitting that inch. You know, and most people aren't going to think, well, how much should I put? It's about .62 inches of rain per square foot per week is what you need to do. But people just set it and forget it, just like even odd watering. In June, I bet you some of those folks went and set their, set their timers for every other day or every third, whatever, on odds. Well, guess what? There's an extra day there, so now they were odds, now they're watering on even days. So people just need to be aware to check their water systems, make sure it's set correctly, set on the correct date, that it's, it's putting up the amount of water that's, that's required of the yard. And can we, can we go through every account? Or we can flag, and I think Christina and I talked about it the other day. If we could go through our 3,300 accounts and see whose water usage has significantly increased, you know, from month to month, from June to July or whatever, you know, we could send them notices, but-
That's a lot of man hours.
Well, no, because, and I'm not saying do that, but I'm trying to think of what's the long-term solution so we're not back here every single summer and doing the same thing. Because one of the things we could look at is punitive pricing. Because what's happening is the ones that are causing all the pain are paying the same as everybody else, right? So if we put in punitive pricing, that could help address it. If not, at least we're getting that revenue in to offset potentially some of the broken equipment from a water treatment plant or whatever. But that's not a solution tonight because that's not a quick solution, right? We need to figure out something to kind of-
There's a couple of things that we could look at. We're looking at about a million gallons of water going on lawns during the summer months. Million to a million and a half. A lot of that is education. People probably don't know or pay attention, like I just said, as to how much water they're putting in their yards. We could, you know, work with possibly Rural Water or some other folks to, to get some type of an education brochure out there. Long-term, talking long-term here. To educate people on how much water their lawn actually needs. It's actually, you know, you drive around and you see some very, very green lawns and you see those sprinklers going every two, three, four days. Those root systems in that grass are not going to withstand any type of drought.
No.
Versus somebody that's not watering that much. So there's, there's some education that we can do. I'm just not quite sure what that's going to look like. Maybe it's a brochure that we can send out in a water bill next spring. But that's something we could take a look at. Long-term, although it used to be long-term, I think it's going to be shorter term now, is doubling the size of our water treatment facility. You know, that was identified in our 2013 study. It was a longer-term goal. You know, we may just need to look at that. And that's about eight and a half to $10 million to upgrade that. So that's something that we're going to probably have to push up ahead of, of some other things. You know, the last few years, we've been concentrating mainly on wastewater improvements. You know, water's going to, once we get the, the project we just discussed earlier done, that'll be the last, I shouldn't say the last, one of the last large wastewater projects. So now we're going to turn our focus to water. We've got our new well in number seven. That was identified as a critical issue. Because if number six goes down, we've got 600 gallons a minute coming off of well number three. We'll do the, we'll do the improvements to the treatment process. Gilhaugen Construction has that contract, that'll be done in the next 90 to 120 days. We're still searching for another water source. You know, we've talked about either a rannying type well in the Big Sioux Aquifer or going out further east into a sweet spot in the, in the Split Rock Aquifer to gather another more well water. But the restriction right now is the treatment plant, or, or will be. We can have all the wells we want, but if we can only push 2,000 gallons a minute through the treatment plant, that's going to be a restriction in the near future. So that is probably going to get moved up on the project list significantly.
I think another thing to remember is water's a valuable resource. And I don't care how much we can pump, we only have so much we can pump. I mean, right now, with what the capacity that we have, you heard Raleigh say what the aquifer was. Well, it doesn't make any difference if you drill more pumps into it or, or wells into it to pull more water out. It's a valuable resource, people need to understand that it's a valuable resource. And unfortunately, it never comes to topic until it's dry and people realize that we're running low. So this council has a lot of huge decisions to make, and there are a lot of very, very expensive decisions to make. You know, we're constantly thrown under the bus because of our, our rates. Well, let's, let's look at this in its totality. I mean, these things are expensive. Water and sewer are, they're funds that are designed to fund themselves. And it is what it is, folks. I mean, it's that simple.
Can I interject a question? We're, we're getting off topic of a watering ban, but we have the question. Brian that brought it up, why didn't we, when we had the opportunity, tap into the Missouri River Pipeline coming through? Didn't we do that? Now we're spending extra money, we're raising rates, we could have done that how many years ago? And we wouldn't have had this, this shortage issue because we would have had a pipeline running directly to us.
Well, not, not necessarily. Back when Lewis and Clark was, was proposed, and that was quite some time ago. And I wasn't, I'm, I'm familiar with Lewis and Clark. And the program, to my understanding, is that if a community wanted water, you had to prepay upfront what your costs were going to be, and then you relied on the federal government to fund the rest. And I think Lewis and Clark started 15 years ago. Laverne got watered last year. So they paid upfront X millions of dollars. And they bought X, they bought X amount of capacity. Just, so once you reach that capacity, that's all you get in Lewis and Clark. You prepay upfront, you might not get the water out of Lewis and Clark for like 15 years like Laverne. And then you bought capacity that's, that's capped. So what we do, you know, when, when we build a treatment plant, whether it's wastewater or water, you project out 20 years' worth of growth. If we had projected 20, 15 to 20 years ago when this was being proposed, we would have exceeded our cap. We would have been out of water with Lewis and Clark. But we still would have had at least X number of gallons coming in. Right now, we're not even sure we're going to get that. Lewis and Clark is not the, the end-all, be-all solution to everything. In my opinion, I think it was a messed up program with the feds relying on appropriations. Is it a source of water? Yes. Would it have solved our problem? No.
And, and like I said, I know we're getting off task and comments. I just wanted to throw that out because I've heard that from several people already too. But the other thing that we were asking is, how are we going to enforce this thing? If we do it with a misdemeanor, you can't base everybody's water usage as in putting it on their lawn. You've got a car washed up here, up the street, are you going to shut him down? That's his business.
The only, the only thing that was contemplated here was lawn watering. Didn't include gardens.
Okay, that was my next question.
Didn't include flower beds, it included lawns. Because that's where most of the water's going. Didn't include washing, commercial car washing facilities. Didn't include any of that. As far as enforcement, it's really easy. If we do a shut-off, the staff drives around during the day, just like they do now. If, if Public Works is driving around checking on water meters or patching potholes right at the moment, if they see somebody watering that isn't supposed to be watering, we hand-deliver a flyer that explains the watering ban or the watering restrictions as they currently sit. What I would propose is if we're going to shut off their water, like I said, if we notice that they're watering on an even day and they're an odd number, we post in their yard on a last notice.
I, I understand that, I've seen those.
Yep.
But Paul Clark, who's not here tonight to defend himself, Roger came up with an ordinance a couple of years ago dealing with dumpsters and covering them so things weren't blowing out. He's never written a citation yet. I bet, and, and when I asked Paul, he said, well, every time I'm in town working, they're using them so they can have them uncovered. So basically, the violation happens from 5:00 at night till 7:00 the next morning. Nothing's ever done. Who waters their lawn in the middle of the day? Most people are doing it at night.
Well, we see, we see a lot of sprinklers- That are watering in the middle of the day when they should-
Right, but anybody with common sense is watering at night.
I've also talked with the police department.
A lot of them are doing it during the day.
I've also talked with the police department, as they're doing their nightly duties. If they see someone that's watering, they will write down the address, we will post it on their lawn the next day. It's a very simple process.
Yeah.
Yep.
I can guarantee you it would.
Yep.
Hi. I just want to update a couple of things on Facebook, because I'm the one who helped out with a few of the posts. But the main post that we posted on July 11th about starting up well three, about our situation, reached about over 25,000 people. And if you look at the numbers, our consumption didn't really go down.
No.
It went down a little bit on 7/13 and then it's creeping back up again. And then we posted again on Friday, kind of a video about how to water and that it was going to be on the agenda tonight, and that went to about 4,500 people. So just so you know, Facebook's getting out there, it's reaching people. I know some of the older people don't have that, but that is our immediate, our way to get it out there now. So just wanted you to know how many it's reached.
I was on two different TV stations early last week, Monday and Tuesday, I believe.
Roger's on tonight.
KSFY and KDLT.
Yeah, we posted on, posted on Facebook on 7/11. We got a call shortly after from KDLT on that Tuesday night. We were on KDLT Tuesday night, Young Killin' Wednesday night.
And I will state, I, I was contacted by six different folks within our ward. All the way out from the bluffs to the eastern border of our, all of those folks, with the exception of one, knew about the ordinance. And asked, why are we going to this extreme? And when I was able to explain to them exactly what was happening, they were in full support. So communication is key, there's no question about that. But it's also important to recognize that you can communicate as much as you want. And there are going to be some people out there that aren't going to hear about it and aren't going to follow it.
So I'm going to make-
In the, in the meantime, we will, we will check on the portable message boards. What I'm thinking is if we're going to put some out there, we'll put one out on Holly coming in from the west. We'll find a location on Split Rock coming in from the north. We'll talk to Alliance and see if we can't put one on their lot at Split Rock and Aspen. That should hit everybody coming in from the south and the east. In the meantime, we'll get, tomorrow morning, we'll get the message up to our mailer and get that out probably hopefully Wednesday in the mail.
Any businesses that have the signs like Taco John's, Tom?
We'll, we'll talk to those folks, see if we can't get a message on there. And then we'll continue to monitor. We will continue to use well number three. It's the only way that we can, we can make enough water to support it. Now, well, number three does, and that's why we put it out there on the news and on Facebook, well, number three does have high iron and manganese. It may cause discoloration of not only your water, but your clothes, if you're especially white.
Fixtures. We had one right away the first day we turned it on.
And we don't know when that goes out into the system, you know, or who's going to get it or where that water goes. It all depends on when the well gets turned on.
Which way-
And which side of town is, is using more water than the other. But we will continue to use well number three. You know, at this point in time, that is manually operated. All of our other wells are-
Automated.
Automated. So they can turn off and on when we need them. We don't have that- We don't have that capability in well number three yet. If we want to do that, it's about 8,000 to 10,000 to put in some type of radio system. You know, in addition to that, if we continue to use well number three, we will require more to the, the feds and the state will require more testing in our system, which isn't a bad thing. We'll double the, the amount of lead and copper tests that we have to do from 30, 35 now to 75 to 80. And then we will also have to test additional four nitrates. But that's, I mean, testing's not a bad thing. The water's good, it's just got some secondary contaminants in it that may cause some issues.
So Raleigh, how low do we have to get so we don't have to use well three? 1.5?
Below our trigger number would be better. 1.6. And just for the communication thing, I don't know if it's something that you guys want to think about, but City of Sioux Falls usually does a mandatory odd-even watering, starts June 1st, goes till October 1st. If you want to eliminate the communication, teach the public now, we do it every year. And just pick a date, whether it's May 1st or June 1st, just make it mandatory, odd-even, certain times of the day. And then you do that for so many years. This isn't, this isn't a problem, this just happened in the last couple of years. We've been dealing with this since we built the plant. And that was built in 1999, so...
Yes.
It's not a, it's just getting worse and worse, is what I'm getting at, so...
I'm going to make a motion to approve Resolution 1117, and get this going.
I'll second it.
A motion from Hausmann, second by Brooks, to approve Resolution 1117. Any questions or discussion?
Can I ask a question towards the final round?
Turn the mic on.
Is this also going to affect the golf course watering? I know they pump out of the river with their own pump, but is that going to shut off the golf courses, or Hidden Valley, which is a private course? And are we going to shut off the football field that's being watered right now?
As far as the municipal golf course, it won't affect that. That water is supplied by Split Rock Creek and a couple of small wells. So that has no effect. If people think that they...
It's the same aquifer, though, right?
No.
Where we pump from our wells?
No.
Okay.
No.
And...
The aquifers are not the issue. The issue is the bottleneck at the treatment plant.
The retention on the preparation, okay.
As far as anybody else that has concerns, whether it's sod or new seed, they can certainly apply for an exception.
And the only thing, I would liken the resolution, who has the ability to grant the exception, because that's not clear in your ordinance. It's supposed to go to the finance officer, but it doesn't clarify who's going to grant it. So I would ask that you amend the resolution to decide who's going to be able to grant it, if it's the finance officer, or your city administrator, whoever, but I, I would like a position.
I will make amends to... Oh, sorry. I'll make amends to my motion of Resolution 1117, that Raleigh and Brian make the final decision.
And who was the second on that? Mr. Brooks, you all right at that?
Yeah.
All right. Okay.
So again, does that shut off the public schools or city property, too?
It says sprinkling, watering, or irrigating of yards and grass.
Okay, so I've got a picture right now, somebody just sent me, of the football fields with full sprinklers.
They can, they can apply for an exception like anybody else.
Yep. They will.
Okay, and I'm sure they would, but do we see that as a public entity that needs water when we are talking about a fire right now? Maybe that's something we can see two weeks later, or a month later, if our water changes. But is that something that should be also? If, if we're paying for it as taxpayers...
Those are all discussions we'd have during the exception process.
Well, again, if Brian or Raleigh get to do it, you're not going to have that discussion.
Well, just to clarify, I had a conversation with the groundskeeper, head groundskeeper of the Brandon Valley School District today about the high school football field. And they are going to quit watering the practice field. They are going to quit watering their banned practice field. But they said something to the effect that there may be injuries when football season comes, so they may want an exception to be able to water a couple of times a week. So that is in the works. He was waiting for this meeting to be done, so...
Thank you, Raleigh.
Thanks, Raleigh.
Thank you for being proactive, really.
Communicating.
Just, my official stance is, I, I personally think this goes too far. I think there's a place in the middle that we should try first, and I think it should be very quick. I think it should be very overly communicated. I think we should actively communicate that we do have an issue, that we should potentially even alter the current watering ban from every other day to once, twice a week, and that we should be actively enforcing it with written notices. I don't know how many written notices we've even given out since we did the odd-even. It just seems to me that, and I understand the, the gravity of the situation, I don't take that lightly whatsoever, but I think there is other ways to address this that won't put the citizens that, that do need the water and want to do that out of a place, and that we can all kind of balance this, this route, so...
All right. With that said, I have a motion and a second, an amended motion and a second, to approve Resolution 1117.
So we're quite confident that if we do just a fine, that that's not going to change the... What do I want to say? That it's not going to change things, we have to be this drastic. I mean, who knows, but that's your thought.
Don't know, don't know. I mean, you've got the, the mandatory restrictions in place. Granted, apparently it didn't get out far enough to enough people. I'm just not sure what the next step would be.
My personal opinion, after this council meeting tonight, and certainly the communication that's gone out through the local news, that, my personal opinion is, we're never going to have to shut off anyone's water. And if we do, I'm sorry, the communication's been out there. You were told it was going to happen. If you're blatantly abusing it, what choice do we have?
Call the question, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, I will. With that being said, I have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
We have one, Mayor.
That's what I heard.
Is that all right with everybody? I can take a roll call. Okay.
All right. Anything else, water sewer?
I guess I do have a question. Are we going to readdress this in two weeks, four weeks, if the weather changes, if the...
Yeah.
I certainly would be a proponent for that. Let's keep an eye on where we're at, and if we see a significant drop in, we can pull it off.
Obviously, he keeps close tabs on the water.
And it shouldn't have to be at a normal council every two weeks if we need to do something quicker. Let's, let's try and do that, please.
I agree. I, I know I'm new to the council here, but this, this has been going on for 11 days. I mean, it seems like maybe we could be a little more proactive in, in actions. I mean, these numbers have been severe for, I think, 11 days now, so...
And that's a struggle, too, right? Look where it started. Our last meeting was on July 3rd, this started on July 5th. So if, if we would have had a meeting in between then, or did something, an emergency session, or we could have got the word out, I just feel like we wouldn't have to go these, these lengths, so...
Doodly noted.
And again, this is just for grass, right? Just for lawns, so...
I would, I would suggest that, you know, people email their friends, you know, we all have email lists. If we feel that the message isn't getting out, send it to your friends and let them know.
Our signs need to say the first word on there, urgent. And they need to be bright pink.
Yeah, that's what I said, too, exactly.
Like Todd's shirt. Yeah.
Especially on the envelope.
I, I really think, again, education is key, and... Yes, everybody agrees on that. I think we need to make it overly...
I kind of agree.
All right. Anything else before council?
No, to adjourn.
A motion from Brooks, second from Jones to adjourn. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, people, for your input.